This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, thank you. Good morning. Can we call to order the Planning, Zoning Commission meeting for January 11, 2021? I noticed the typo here. Can you please call Row?
Chair Marsh.
Here.
Vice Chair Carey.
Here.
Member Henigan.
Here.
Alternate member Lemming.
Present.
Let the record show that member Hutchins will be in shortly.
Thank you. Can we stand and pledge? Now entertain any comments that the commissioner may have?
I have one comment, and that's I'd like to express to the staff that, in my opinion, that the priority issue from last month is the demolition issue of that demolition permits, and disappointed that it's not on this agenda. So we would strongly encourage that that be expedited as quickly as possible because of the time that it takes to get from us to the commission and the commission for a second reading. This is a serious issue that needs to be addressed as quickly as possible. Thank you.
I'd like to concur and support Chair Carey in that comment. I agree as well. Anybody else? I just have one kind of housekeeping. The seawall issue that's occurring as we speak, which seemed to have created some angst in the town or in the community. I am kind of surprised it didn't come to us first as a construction improvement.
For the CCCL?
Yeah, I mean, for the fact that we're constructing, you know, impacting property owners' neighborhoods. I know it was kind of a rush situation based on the limited time outside of turtle season to get the construction, but even I was kind of, obviously I've been keeping up, but I think it did impact, or it does impact, you know, a number of people.
It does, but it didn't meet any of the thresholds to come before PNC. Because even though it is a unified, they all apply for it separately, and that didn't meet any threshold for one individual property to come before PNC.
Well, I think, you know, I think it's fair to give our citizens the opportunity at this board or commission level to discuss more openly some of the concerns rather than, from what I gather, I was out of town, but the commission, you know, seemed to have had. I just think it's another one of those situations. I just have a flashback to artificial turf. And I just think it does have an impact on the community.
Then we might have to look at the ordinances for land development and change thresholds. So things might come before here.
I'm not blaming anybody. I just think it's, it is a pretty substantial improvement.
It is something that we can explore. We can do that. Also, just even as a courtesy. Yeah, that.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think it's unfair to have the commission, non-commission, be the receivers of, you know, I think this is actually the better form of forum to look at technical issues. And I don't know what the other commissioners on this board feel, but Chair David.
I apologize for being late this morning. I hadn't all set up on my timer and computer and Carla for calling me and reminding me of an obligation.
It's okay.
Never had this happen. I'm embarrassed, and I apologize to the members and to everyone else present.
Thank you. No problem. We understand.
But definitely we can look into that, and like Pam said, we might be able to just do a courtesy that even if it's not required, just to bring it to you for your comments.
Yeah, I think it's a, it's the impact it has on the area or the community. That's an easement for a lot of people, both of those. And, you know, I just think it's on the air to all of a sudden find, you know, heavy equipment coming down. I did speak to Derani about some of the items, but it was too far gone. And I don't know if any other commissioners have any feeling, but I think it's important that any, that's a major improvement in town. I mean, we've got six, I think it is, seawalls.
About three properties.
Derani?
There's definitely none.
None, sorry. That's a, that's a pretty massive undertaking. Okay, I just did that. Was that an impact on the coastal construction zone issues that we've had in the past? Well, no, they had to get through DEP, you know, for their permitting, which they've done. But I'm just saying, finding a vehicle to bring it before us would. Yeah, I mean, I think any construction, you know, of that magnitude or improvement, I don't know, I mean, rephrase that, improvement of that magnitude. Yeah, I was just trying to see if there was a way to bring it in based on its location.
We used to have it with the CCCL. It used to have to come before PNC and Town Commission.
Right.
Before, and that process was entirely changed to be, to be handled internally. And so, I mean, we can look into changing that process again if, you know, anything CCCL-wise, but again, that would include anything. I mean, I understand that this is a major because of all the properties doing it at once, but that would include any, any other project that would be easy to see the line to come before that if we want to change.
Yeah, I think it takes the burden off staff as well, because I know you had a number of calls and I'm looking at Derani, but I think it went through the channels and eventually arrived at your desk. But I think, since we have a commissioner here present, I wonder if I could ask her if she has an opinion on the public comment unless any other.
We're discussing the Edith.
Edith.
As I recall, it came about in a way that most, most of these situations don't. It was an emergency situation back in February with their properties falling into the sea. And it did come through, maybe not y'all, but it came to us more than once, understated as an emergency situation. They figured out how to do it, they're paying for it, and it looked like actually a win-win for us. The biggest problem was people weren't there to hear and read and didn't look on our catch-up on what we did during the week and at the meetings, so therefore people thought they were caught without knowing. In truth, it was out there, and it was emergency. We had to do it quick. Normally, this would not be what would happen if somebody needed to go through and get a seawall. So this was kind of a different situation than most areas. Right, Derani? We just kind of had to get in there, because if you walked on the backside, you saw these properties.
I see it weakly.
And they're quick. I think the guys are doing a good job. So that's kind of, this was an awkward situation. So that's my.
Yeah, okay. I just think it's, it has far-reaching impacts.
Oh, yeah, but again, it was such an emergency that that was what came up and you get it done before turtle season as well. So it was like a perfect storm.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Okay, any other comments in the public? Okay, Karen, then. Let's move on to approval in a minute. If anybody got any comments? I believe on, is a question on page nine. We determined to defer action on the demolition. Did we take a vote on that, Carla? Because there's no vote noted here.
Yes, yes, you did.
Okay, well, you need to add the.
Yeah, so I need to add the second and the, the votes.
Neil, have you got any?
None, sir.
There's, I have a few. On page four, about two-thirds of the way down, on the member Hutchins, the last line, gravity, plating, I think, I don't know what that is, but it's, should say, inlay on the exterior facade.
So where's that, except the travertine, travertine?
Yeah, it's the word plat, plating. I don't know what that word really means.
You might have had plating or something.
Yeah, can you correct that just to say inlay on the exterior facade? That was the applied travertine on the front elevation.
Okay.
On page six, towards the bottom, bottom paragraph, number Henigan's statement. This reference throughout that paragraph to sectional, again, I'd like to know what that really means, but I think you should put in there cross-section. That was the intent.
Okay, I mean, I go by what is said.
I understand. I speak funny sometimes, so. Just put that cross-section wherever section refers.
I'll put a top verse so that that's what it's referencing.
Okay. And then on page, page, the bottom, second to bottom, last paragraph, it says, "Discuss the code enforcement in a case of", I assume that's abandonment.
Which at the bottom?
It's in the second to last paragraph.
Okay.
Commission's commanded staff, and then third line down, it says, "Process in the case of".
Yeah, that was just a typo.
I hate to be picky, but it's the record, and I got excited. All right, any other comments regarding the minutes? Okay, motion, second. Vote in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Carla, I'm going to have you help us through, or Pam, sorry, I apologize. On the discussion items.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Good morning. I am reading from a memorandum that the town manager wrote, be part of it. She had to attend a meeting with county commissioner this morning. So any questions you have, you're right here to answer them. This is, the ordinance that you have for discussion is regarding the building height with reference to the FEMA regulations. The joint town commission and planning and zoning commission workshop staff was directed to develop an exploratory committee to discuss building height in reference to the changes in elevation due to the new FEMA regulations and draft an ordinance addressing that issue. The committee met several times and drafted the attached ordinance, which I'll go through a little bit in a second. Commissioner Vishalek, who was a part of the exploratory committee, has asked that PNC also discuss the concept of using a height differential for larger lots, making it tiered to the setbacks. For example, if a 15-foot setback is required, but the homeowner chooses to build at a setback of 25 feet, the building height could be increased to 36 feet maximum, as opposed to 32 feet as stated in the ordinance. Okay, so you have in front of you the ordinance that we drafted with your consideration, and it's basically dealing with the FEMA regulations. Because of those regulations, which essentially make it, you have to build your house or your building a little bit higher, we decided that it would be best to reduce it by the four feet. So in each of the sections of the code dealing with residential buildings, we have drafted a new section which basically states that wherever a base flood elevation is dictated by the FEMA National Flood Insurance Program MAX, where the differential between the BFE and existing crown of road is four feet or higher, the maximum two-story building height shall be no more than 32 feet. And we point out in the ordinance that the adjustment is not indicated in a figure that is in the code right now, there are figures that are in the code, and we don't want this to infringe upon that, so that's why that sentence is there. So we wanted to discuss that with you and also discuss Commissioner Vishalek's proposed change as well.
Thank you. For all the commissioners' understanding of what this ordinance is trying to achieve.
I have some comments. I think we're potentially making this more complicated than we need to. The four-foot, the BFE of four feet high or higher then triggers it. So if it's 3.9 feet, then you get to build at 36 feet. But if it's another tenth of an inch higher, or tenth of a foot higher, you get to, then you have to build at 32 feet. You know, the crown of the road is, you know, there, could vary in front of a lot. And I think we're getting into something that's, that we're going to make it harder for staff. And I want to combine this with another comment. So I would favor just saying 32 feet, period. You know, that we would change the height limit to 32 feet and leave it at that. And I want to combine that with a comment that we're getting more and more of the flat roof buildings now, which, you know, it used to be 36 feet, which would have a nice slope away, so you wouldn't have 36 foot right at the front elevation on a house. And, you know, now we're getting the taller houses. So the overall, just moving it down to 32 feet would be what I think I favor, unless the discussion here convinces me otherwise.
We make sure I understand. So you're saying in any situation where FEMA regulations are implicated, 32 feet.
Because we know that it already, the FEMA's, we're going to have to comply to FEMA anyway. So just make it 32 feet. Don't get, don't get into trying to figure out what the crown was, and then if somebody could figure out that someplace in front of their lot, the crown was, was less than four feet above, then they get to build at 36 feet. It just, I think we're making it too complicated for ourselves.
Yeah, I think, you know, we, fortunately, you all weren't part of the discussion which we had. And thanks to Corey, you know, a lot of research was done with other communities, and each one has a peculiar twist, but it's not across the board standard by each town creates a reference. What Martin brought up was the fact, as you're aware, and Derani can explain it better, but we have a few sites, a few lots in town. They're primarily point lots on the water, on the intercoastal side, that now FEMA is requiring the finished floor to be at 12. And the road may still be at four, four and a half, whatever it is. And then currently under the ordinance now, they could build 36 on top of that 12, which creates, you know, just a huge impact to adjacent properties and the town. So this was a discussion to try to come up. I brought up very early what's called a point of measurement, which is based on the crown of road, and you create a height point that's in your reference. It wouldn't be tied into the finished floor elevation. It's overall height. That didn't get a lot of traction. Some towns have used, that are using it, and it seems to work, but I think the discussion was to try, to your point, to make it as simple and understandable. And when Martin brought in this, I agreed with it because I think it's a step in the right direction. The one reference which I brought up in one of our discussions, or I think it may have been, my mind's gone, Lisa brought up, it's to your point, that the roads elevations can, it's not tremendous, but they can be different by eight, 10 inches, which brings into the discussion whether it should be an average of the, the crown of the road across the front of the property, that would give it the basis or a base point that would take care of your concern about, yeah, not everything is level or the same. So if I'm understanding, you're suggesting just to go 32 feet maximum?
And that helps solve that other problem I brought up, that we're increasingly having these taller front elevations with houses without sloped roofs.
I think the, the other part that's missing, and we didn't discuss it in the length, was to limit the parapet, which is the vertical element on a flat roof, that wall that continues above the roof. I don't think we created any limitation on that, because if you remember, it started, what we have in town is, flat roofs were discouraged, and, but you had to have a four and 12 pitch behind, and that created the abnormal parapet, as you see at the end of this beauty on the, in the ocean avenue. And I think that's what we're all trying to avoid, to restrain or restrict. So I, I think that should be, I don't know if you're following me, Pam.
I'm making notes.
I think we need to, to Commissioner Carey's, you know, advice or suggestions is that, you know.
Simple, does simplify.
It does simplify, but on the point of the flat roofs, I'd like to see if we can put in some restriction on the height above, Corey helped me here, most of them are above the tie beam or bearing point.
Yeah, the zoning regulations, sorry, the zoning regulations limit a one-story building to 12 feet, 12 feet in height to the top of the tie beam. Two-story buildings are 24 feet to the top of the tie beam. So if you wanted to, wanted to go slightly above that to give some parapet, then I think I would refer to the architect to tell me what a reasonable parapet would be, but those are the limitations currently.
My experience, they're two to three feet above the top of the tie beam.
So does that mean a 24-foot tie beam, and you'd have, say, three foot more? So that would be the typical flat roof house we would see would be 27, 28 max, something like that.
Yeah.
You, well, but there's nothing that, code-wise, that prevents them from doing from a tie beam of 24 to a height of 36, even though we probably wouldn't approve it? But.
Under the current regulations, that's correct, yes, that the, again, some regulations.
But that's.
Four and 12, or 12 and four is the maximum slope with an overall height to the ridge of 36, for a two-story.
But the parapet becomes a height reference, not the ridge.
Right.
So you'll find that you will get parapets at 36 feet height or 32, whichever is adopted. And then the owner can have whatever heights within internal space.
So we really should define a parapet max above the tie beam, right?
Correct.
Which isn't there now.
Do you, you agree with this, Derani?
Yeah, I'm getting to the part where I wanted to kind of, oh, by the way, good morning, guys. We were instructed to deal with the differential in heights of new construction because it created a sought-to effect. So that is what we were attempting to doubt. So what we have is a new building adjacent to an existing 1950s bungalow-style house, and there is this towering effect of the new construction close to it. And that is because FEMA now is adjusting the floor heights. And then on average, a new building will be nine feet higher, the floor level, all right, on the point lots. So in addition to the actual height, it's not going to be exaggerated because the floor level will actually be pushed up. So that is how we address the ordinance. We started looking at other jurisdictions, and some were extremely complicated. The one we had kind of settled on was Delray Beach, where they had a map. And we tried it for a few times and realized that there were too many loopholes within that because we came exactly to where we were. If the road slopes, you're going to have a crafty engineer that's not going to argue what is mean, what is median, what's saying. You know, and do we take it from the top? Do we take it from the bottom? Then you have other issues like lots, for example, old ocean and A1A that actually have two entrances. Now, how do you deal with that slope and the addressing? So we actually tried to simplify, so believe it or not, this is the simplified version. So I have a little thing, you know, we had a tabletop talk, and my friends, you know, where I'm going with this one. So just kind of understanding the town, I believe it or not, this is how we are, where we're. So this arm is the ocean, okay? And we're ocean ridge, that means we're this little hump right here. The finger lots are kind of the fingers of Thor, okay? So Sable Island is pretty much here. The, this ordinance will not affect most of the lots on Sable Island. Natural high ground that we have, we won't have a problem because you won't have a differential, because some of those lots in the middle are actually zones that are old up to 200, and then the ones surrounding them are so low that you won't have it. But what we have the issues with are the point lots, and some of those are pretty low. And the new requirement is actually 11, maybe 12 in one as well. So what FEMA is actually trying to do is to level off the point lots with our, you know, stable high lots. So they're pushing the floor level up, but we have existing houses that are down here. So when we're building, we're starting here, so that is actually what's, what's creating that sought-to effect. So, you know, so most of the, the lots are actually those fingers on the, on the man-made islands that we have. And the closer we get to A1A, the less we'll have those, those issues. So that is where it's going to be, you know, we're going to have that, that situation. And yes, I mean, there's no way around a very smart engineer who's set on, you know, not losing anything for his client. They came for that, like a good liar. So, you know, but four feet, if you're close to it, and, you know, 4.9, you know, if he's crafty, he's probably going to get away with it. And, you know, we have to give that credit because in truth and in fact, we're actually taking away something. And the big argument is for somebody, you know, who's in the property rights, why are you, you know, penalizing me? And in truth and in fact, it is possible. If we were supposed to build exactly to the building code minimum, we would have a two-story house with a pitched roof under 20 feet. So 36 feet is, is pretty high. I mean, this roof in here is probably 10 feet, and this is a comfortable masturbator. So we had two, that's 20 feet, and the pitched roof on top of that, you know, another 10 feet, that's still 30. So it is possible, but of course, because it's been there before, and we have other houses that are large, then, you know, you might have it. With regards to the reduction in the flat roof, that is something that we did, you know, start to discuss, but however, we were not given specific instructions. And of course, we had enough on our plate dealing with this one. So we did, you know, figure that the commission might want to discuss that, and yet we're looking for your guidance on how we might go about adjusting, you know, for that, that. You know, so far, the recommendations have been pretty good, and the committee goes and provides.
Chair Marsh?
Yes. Mr. Carey's simple solution of 32 feet is going to take away all the ambiguities. It's going to just be based on the simple concept we've got now, the first floor height.
and the maximum height. If you compare that to what we have existing, we allow a finished floor height of seven now, if I'm not correct? Is that correct, seven, under the old FEMA?
Uh, no, it is based on the best available data, so whatever FEMA decides.
We didn't have anything higher than seven before, did we?
Uh, previously, yes, it was seven, but, but we actually put in language that is automatic and, you know.
No, but what, what I'm getting at is we had seven before. We added 36 to it, you've got 43. The worst case we have now is one or two lots that are at 12. Most of them are 10, there's a couple of 11s, there's a couple of 12s. 12 plus 32 is 44. Anything else is going to be slightly lower. It captures every condition in the town and doesn't impact all, all the people that are below town. Which is the majority of the lots by far.
I, I do agree with you, we're just following instruction.
No, I understand, but then we don't, we don't get, we have no arguments with architects, we have no arguments with surveyors. It just becomes a simple standard. And I'm just comparing it to what we have now. It's, it's the same condition. We're not going to see a notching or ratcheting up or something that looks like a monument on a hill. And it's, it's covered by 32 feet. The parapet height, I'm in agreement with also, we can leave the tie beam height where it is and just have another simple statement that if you, if you're building a house with a parapet, the parapet can't be higher than four feet from the tie beam. That's too high. Well. But, but the house would still be only 28 feet high. The way it is now, it could be 36.
Right, well, that's, that's the reason for the kind of,
I mean, I don't want to get in an argument of parapet height. I don't like to see them.
Well, my question, good points. I think we need to put the parapet into this mix as well, Pam.
But you're only just talking about parapets as it relates to the FEMA regulation? What are you talking about generally?
Generally. I think we need to come. My comment, Pam, is that you don't even need reference to FEMA. The same as what, what Rick is saying. We just define the max height as 32. The explanation, if you want to include it, could be because of the change in FEMA regulations. But we just make a, we just bring the new code height down to 32 feet and it's covering all the conditions we're talking.
Yeah, but then it, the lots that are not in the extreme FEMA zone will be penalized. Because if you're at, say, seven or eight and you're only 32, then you're, well, we're getting into the, we're going to get into the turf fairness issue. I'm trying, how do we avoid that? I think that's why in the discussions we had and asked staff or the attorney to correct me is this is very few lots and we don't want the minority changing the rules for everybody else. I think it's unfair. Um, I think 32 on a cross-the-board height, if that's what I'm hearing for every house in town?
I, I just tried to simplify the process and make less gaming potential.
I think.
Because I, I don't like that if you're just under four feet, it's a big difference than if you're just over four feet.
Yeah, but I think it's, what, what the attempt here was, was this is a limited few that would be impacted by this restriction, this 32-foot restriction. If FEMA had them going up, you know, in the 11, 10 or whatever range, that would really create a, an impact on the scale, a massing threat.
So, and maybe I didn't understand that because that's not referenced in the background information, but I, I thought that we were concerned that, you know, a lot of the lots that we're seeing now are, you know, putting retaining walls in and creating more of this sawtooth effect. And we're already seeing that just because of the FEMA change. And, you know, possibly that's something we're going to have to live with.
Let me ask you, D'Arani, can you just give in lay terms what you think the average is? Right now, our base, the average house FEMA is seven with a one-foot free board?
Yes, that is correct.
So.
At eight, what is the current we have?
Yeah, majority, and how much would you say town-wide? All under that, just approximately?
How many homes?
Yeah.
So I would say all the houses that have been built in the past year, which is probably, I don't know, so. Um, but the new ones that are coming are going to be higher. So we're projecting into the future because the new applications that we're getting are using the most current FEMA information. So for example, 21 Ocean is going to be at 10. Um, we have a couple more that are coming in that are also going to be 10. There's one on a point lot, we got a end of Marlin that they've begun design work and that one's going to be like 11 or 12.
And 21 Ocean, did they use the whole 36 feet on top of the 10?
Yes.
You see, so under the current regulations of seven plus the 36, we would have cap height of 43 above sea low. And now if you go to 10 and allow 36, you're going to have 46 foot height.
Yeah.
The one at the end of Marlin could end up being 48.
Yes. Which, when compared to the 36 that's current, that's, it's a large, that's 10 foot of yeah, difference. So that's why this was kind of selected just for those non, I don't want to use the word non-conforming lots, but under FEMA criteria became, you know, abnormal in terms of normal elevation criteria, so.
So this is addressing a few, but we may have issues that we need to address more than a few. That's what I'm kind of hearing here because, you know, if you're finding buildings that are getting up over 40 feet, that's, you know, it's like a four-story building.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, well, it is a serious impact to the scale and, and mass of the the community and town, you know, it's, um, yes, David, sorry.
Can I ask you a question? So you were using the analogy of a fork and the high point is the town, the ridge.
Right.
And then the low point, which are the point lots, the end of the tides.
Correct.
So what we're trying to do is, is actually create something like this where the tides are bent back up. But what, what about everybody who's between the ridge and the new high level on the end, on the end lots?
Okay, so it actually gets less, so you actually have the ones in the middle. Those would actually not be affected as much, the ones that are on the tip that, you know, because again, FEMA is trying to use the elevation, like these guys are in X and they're that's, for lack of a better word, say, safe. Okay, so they're trying to lift these lots up to that, you know, close to the existing base, but of those high lots.
So in a perfect world, the entire street will be built, could be built to the height of the ridge?
So that is the projection that I, I mean, in a decade or two, the streets will actually, you know, eventually be elevated. So this will actually, you know, move everything in that direction also, so that, that's where that's.
Um, so I guess the, the mood of the commission is, are they, do they want this rewritten or re-clarified or or is the understanding that the intent here is to affect or to impact you or limited number of properties in town?
I'll speak. I, it wasn't clear coming in when we got the package that this was and D'Arani with his fork has done a pretty good job of, of explaining the few and that this is impacting the few. Then my question becomes, which, which means that's probably fine as it is, but do we have a larger problem with the many that are going to be coming in that we're not addressing here at all? That, that's kind of the secondary discussion to this. Or we, we find that we're going to have this sawtooth effect and that we're going to have retaining walls next to neighbors and, and then 36 foot on top of that raised elevation due to the new FEMA codes. That's kind of a separate question.
Yeah, um, yeah, get, get used to retaining walls because they're kind of, or they're, they're here. Um, this is where, you know, an agency that's trying to protect your rights, it's coming in kind of blanket. Actually, it'd be interesting, I don't know, can we get the FEMA map up here?
All right, I can take the, I can go grab one from my office.
No, no, it's okay.
Can I make another comment, Mark? When, when I first looked at this issue, I focused on what we're permitting existing. Seven-foot floor, 36-foot building, 43 cap. So I looked at the street elevations in the town from data that Lisa Tropecki gave me and my simple answer was for each additional FEMA required foot above seven, we bring the building height down one foot. So if you, if you have a 12-foot, you lose five. If you have a 10, you don't, you only lose three. And if you're where we are today, you lose nothing.
So that's a variable reference. I don't know, Pam, help me here.
But it's, it's, it's commensurate with fairness and.
Right, no, it's, you all are coming up with different ways of trying to address the issue and none of them are incorrect. It's just, what do you think is most fair? Um, what do you think will look the best in terms of, you know, getting these heights of, of buildings on levels so that they're not up and down, up and down? None, none of what you're saying is wrong. We, we, we can craft any of these, but you have to choose. And you've got to figure out if you want to lower the height just in general. That's a different issue, that's a different issue altogether. And if we would change this completely, we would just, you know.
But I, but I think this one makes it a level blank field.
I think Neil's got an interesting proposal. I mean, what, what we're doing is we sit here and we kind of talk about it, but now we're starting to see some of these houses go up. Uh, and I have one in my neighborhood that's, is, are looking at it and say, that's a tall house. And it's a tall house because the elevation's been brought up. And we're going to start seeing that more and more and, you know, the, the town's going to start getting complaints and say, well, why didn't you do something about this? And, uh, you know, and we point the finger at FEMA when we do have the opportunity to do something about it in advanced. I, I kind of like Neil's idea.
And then within the sawtooth, right?
It, well, it's, it's trying to reduce the sawtooth because, because if, if you have one lot that has, has to go up, then the roof line still has to stay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're, we're capping at what we were already permitting. What we already let people do. So you're not being treated any differently than what we historically left.
So you were using that 43-foot figure and that would, that would be how we'd cap it on new stuff? So it all falls on the same sideline?
Yes.
But that only deals with FEMA issues though. You're not getting to the larger issue of how tall the buildings are. I thought that.
Yes, it is, it is, because FEMA, the building can't be higher than this and FEMA is just eroding what, they're taking it away from the bottom. We're not talking about the top. The top is capped in the whole town at what we have today, which is first floor elevation of seven, 36 feet, we've allowed that. So nobody can say they're being treated unfairly at the max height of their house. FEMA, by raising the flood, is taking away how low you can. So we're, we're just looking at it from the bottom instead of the top.
And see, Corey, not even, is that, yes, I understand or yes, I think that's a good idea?
It makes sense.
Yeah, I'm looking at it too. I mean, I think.
I mean, it's hard to maybe to digest it all in this meeting, I don't know, but I'm just.
Are you, you're, you're supporting that? That's what I call a point of measurement. You have your seven and, and you know, you're, you're.
Right.
Your, your datum is the existing seven foot that we've allowed. Which is a point of measurement, which is a nicer word for it.
I just, I just said those, so basically that post that's going to be at 12, we know when we get 31 and then everybody else in between would have to have a gradation going back to 36.
Correct.
That's another method, we, we could.
Yeah, that's right.
Thank you, Neil, I think that's pretty good.
I, that's the point of measurement that I've been trying to establish. I, I don't know what the challenge is maybe. Because we don't have a point of measurement right now.
By, by that, there's no set figure, the seven you're suggesting becomes a point of measurement. Well, actually, the point of measurement becomes 43 NAVD.
And that includes the elevation and the height of the house.
And, and what I'm saying is today, we were requiring a minimum of seven NAVD, correct? So there's your 36 differential.
Yeah, it's, it's, we got to create a point of measurement. We know 36 is allowed. So the point of measurement, I, I don't think it should start at the top. I think it should have a base.
I think it should because then if, if the FEMA number changes again in the future, you still, you're still going to be in compliance. You're just going to, if, if the flood rises again and they raise it all another foot, you still got your datum at the top.
Neil, this is kind of like creating a flight level, right?
It is.
Yeah.
And we're all going to use, and we're all going to use 2992 for the algorithm.
Red G7 or whatever it is, I'm up for 55.
Yep.
Yeah.
Levels instead of altitudes, correct.
Um, D'Arani, what do you think about the point of measurement as seven?
Absolutely, we could do that.
Because the overall is give, the code states that finished floor to top of ridge is 36. I, I'd just like to keep the, the point of measurement at.
I'm just, I'm just trying to provide a reference for people to realize that we're not taking them out of the realm of what is allowed today. I don't, if you want to make it seven and still say it's whatever, we're 36.
Let's take.
There's going to be the argument, you're punishing me and the answer is no, we're not. Everybody else was capped at 43 and has been. It's not changing. What's changing is the bottom, because that's where the water comes up.
If you have a complaint, see FEMA.
The point of, that's the answer right there, Mr. Carey.
Now, that's. What did you say?
If you have a complaint, see FEMA.
Now, are we going to try to take care of flat roof in the same?
That's, that's another part of the.
All right, let's look at the point lot of Marlin. There, the street's what, four, five?
No, I think 2.8 is in my head, but that's not really, sorry.
Okay, so we said start at seven.
Sorry, what's?
Seven, that's our starting point. So FEMA are telling them they have to be 12. So FEMA are telling them they have to be 12. So they've lost five feet.
That's correct.
And then. So your their height is limited to 31. That would be a hardship.
If you wanted to slope through a building, you probably is going to drive them towards our 24 plus a parapet.
Yeah, but I mean, I could see the arguments being made. You guys know better than me, but. Is that going to, or Pam? All three of you. From a legal standpoint, is that a hardship? To lose five feet of overall height?
Me, a legal standpoint.
All right.
I mean, they're very high. So it's not a hardship, but is it? Is it a fairness issue? Is it that when a person purchases their property, do they come in thinking that they're going to be able to build a house at a certain height? And you now change that dramatically? I think as long as we have the, you know, government has right to make these types of changes in the best interest of the community. So as long as we can establish that that this is townwide and we give the reasons why, I think it could be done from a legal point. But I don't know how that legality is not always the right question.
That's, we we circled back from something similar. That's why we circled this four foot. That's proposed here is that creating a new point of measurement, which is, you know, four foot above and then going up.
I mean, you would be penalizing Marlin four feet anyway, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
It's not a hardship. It's the same.
I mean, it's pretty much the same thing. It's very similar. I mean, as a matter of fact, your proposal is more generous. Because then you again allow gradation. So you have, you know, just a few point lets that would be, you know, at 31, but you know, moving closer to A1A, they'll get taller back up to 36. But just to answer another question, though, yes, there would be pushback from.
I mean, we can't accommodate FEMA without impact. I think that's we're going to impact somebody somewhere.
So are we going to, should we go back to just looking at a flat 32?
That's kind of where we've chased this tail around quite a bit. I'm still chasing it, obviously.
And I mean, I was just thought of this. So you will penalize the person, just say FEMA says, oh, my gosh, you are so low. You've got to work 12 or 13. Their house is just getting smaller and smaller. Whereas someone else, the house might not be as small. You are getting them to the single family level.
I mean, well, no, no, you're still going to, the worst house would be 31 feet tall. That's seven feet higher from the ridge. Excuse me, from the tie beam to the ridge of the roof.
It's it, the tie beam is always going to be 24. So it's just how much roof you get.
It's still allowing.
Let me, let me just remind everybody, I don't think there's any reference to tie beam height.
Well, in the zoning regulations, there's figure 64.6 that that illustrates the maximum pipe of a one story and a two story with the with the tie beam being 12 or 24 respectively.
That's in there, right?
Yeah, but it's the overall is what it's always been.
It's the overall being 64.6.
So if the max is already 24, you have seven feet for your roof.
So it's really had an architectural style on on the the roof slope and whether or not you would ultimately allow a flat roof overall for the entire house.
All right, I think, to be honest, I think we still have some work to do. I would suggest, you know, this, this is almost a workshop item.
What would you like us to do? Bring bring back, look at more examples? Bring back the ordinance that addresses each of the issues that you kind of discussed? Not really sure. Yeah. What?
Has this actually been a workshop? There's not enough.
No, this has rarely come up based on the Marlin and the impact it will have. Because that's such an abnormal height. Which was brought up through Derani. And how to address it.
And I believe 113 island drive. So there is a small portion of that lot that also has that. And we have to use the most restrictive. So when that is rebuilt, that too, I believe, the base floor that now.
And there's projects coming to you now?
No, we we're just being aware of designers that are working. There's nothing that we've seen so far, but we've had calls for designers. When they when they start a design process, they'll call and ask and say, do we really have to use this height? And tell them what order. So they've started the design process, or at least that one.
I mean, has this house been submitted already?
No, no. We just, you know, have discussions with designers.
Currently, they're using 12 plus 36.
That's why, so I mean, so this again is timeliness again. Just like the demolition, you know, putting it off another month and another two readings.
Well, we can, again, Pam, help me here. Zoning in process.
Well, we would have, we need to do an ordinance on that. We need to.
That's how you.
Or resolution, right? You have.
But I'm not disagreeing that we defer, but I am disagreeing that we just do nothing and it comes in because of existing. So if we're going to do a workshop in the future, I think we need to do the bayonets thing.
Or you can just keep cashing it out right now. It's solid.
We actually have a document here that's more restricted than your recommendation.
Yeah, it's.
So we're trying to avoid it's salted. We don't want to prevent somebody from building a house that they want and forcing them into a design that they may not want. There's this current proposed ordinance deal with with those possibilities. Because I get it, Mark. You look at the house just starting on terra firma and going up. And Neil and I are looking down. And from a practical point of view, I think your idea is is better rounded in the building. So can we do something that gives people some choice, doesn't force them into something they may not want?
Choice is not a good word. I think nobody wants to. I dislike ordinance first. Because I fight for them.
Well, I described mine as top down, but that's not the statement. The statement is that for every FEMA foot required above seven, you reduce the building height by one foot from 36. So I'm starting out at the bottom also in one sense.
Yeah, I I think the reason the four foot came up was it seemed like a fair for both the owner or developer as well as the town. I mean, he gave that, took four feet away from the overall height right off the bat. When you have this abnormal FEMA requirement of 10, 11, 12, it just limited them. It just was a clean deduction.
But but then the nine foot house is 45 foot tall. And there's a lot of nines on.
I'd like to be able to lead you through this, but I don't know. I mean, I like where Neil's going because it it makes each one adjusted a foot at a time rather than some aren't adjusted at all and the others get four foot locked off. And it it applies more broadly to the town than just to a few. I I think it's a good approach. We don't have the language to vote on here. But I I would like to. My view is I'd like to see staff take what Neil suggested and and work with it. And then separately, let's talk about the parapet. And I think we should give you some direction before we leave today about what we think the height of the parapet above 24 should be. And is it 24 for a tie beam is not an established code thing? Then now's the time to establish that too.
It's a reference.
It's a reference? I don't think it's written in text. Is it just in an illustration?
Yeah, it's a graphic. Cory, help me here. Palm Beach, which I know pretty well, and this is comes back to my point of reference. They use a point of reference, I think, close to seven feet as a starting point. No matter how high or how low your property is. And then, but they they're different. They go to, which is insane, the height of the building height is measured to the underside of the bearing roof structure, which can be the tie beam, it can be a heel of a truss, it can be. It's it's very conglutant. We're talking overall here, which I think is a little bit more controlling. Because the the one in Palm Beach, you can then have a larger roof structure that then, you know, defeats the purpose of scale. So I I'm starting to like the seven and overall a little bit more.
Why don't we bring that back? We'll bring this again. We'll bring that back. And you can, we can discuss it some more, decide which one you want to go to. Or we need to make some.
Can I make my own motion?
Yeah, let me just clarify. You hear me saying point of measurement? That should be the term that's used. It takes away that kind of arbitrariness, even though it's referencing plus seven. It comes from a planning ordinance. It's a better, firmer reference point.
So would the word be that seven NAVD becomes a datum?
Yeah, the datum or point of measure.
And for every, I'm making a motion that NAVD seven becomes the datum. And for every foot increase in the FEMA first floor height, we reduce 36 foot max overall building height by an additional foot.
Well, you know, Tracy. Let's just go through it. Let's use the 12. So point of measurement is so, yeah, you end up at 31 feet already. Where this will allow 32. Tracy, in fairness, I don't know if you've been listening or.
I have not. I can't figure out what you're talking about just by that.
That's constant to summarize, Pam, if you would, will.
Oh, I wish, I I was going to ask him to repeat his motion again. I have point of measurement NAVD seven. And for every foot increase in the FEMA requirement reduces the height by.
Every foot increase in in the FEMA requirement reduces the max allowable building height by one foot.
So we're considering that as opposed to what we've presented, which means that the maximum height could be lower than the 32 that we proposed. It could be 31, it could be higher. It depends on the individual towers, you know, wherever the FEMA regulations are. Could you add to that not to be lower than 32?
Well.
Or in any case, no, not to be.
I still don't see what 31 foot restriction do. That's a lot of house.
It's just going to be a more flat.
And we talked about parapets, which is another issue.
Well, we did. We had to kind of hold this section up. The idea is to keep the ceiling height of the town the same as it is today, which is seven foot NAVD plus 36 is 43.
Right.
If you do the calculations in every instance of every height of FEMA, the max would still be 43. It's not our fault that flood is rising and FEMA is making decisions. It doesn't mean to say we have to keep raising the height of our town.
Yeah, that's.
And lots of the people in the town, many of the lots won't be impacted at all. Some will only be impacted one foot. Some will be two, some will be three. A very, very minuscule number will be 12, the 12, which will be five. 95% of the town will be weighted right now.
Yeah, I think I think it has merit. Tracy, I was just saying, we need to use that as a point of measurement or data, whichever you want. That the seven foot is the historical reference point.
But we can write it up. Let's write it up and talk about it. Sometimes I hate to say this, these things can't be rushed. So.
No, this is huge.
It is, it is huge. I'm curious if Cory has any comments.
Well, I think if that's what you're really affecting is the overall height where the the first two stories under zoning wouldn't be affected really at all. So it's really affecting the overall height of the roof itself. And that's what comes down.
Okay.
So it's not habitable space. And it becomes more of a protection issue. And one where if you if you're lowering the overall roof height to such an extent that it drops below the minimum four and 12 slope, then then you do start reducing the overall height of the second floor space. But you also have between 24 feet and 36 feet just to reduce that roof height. So I think you you have you have an enormous house if you're if you're reducing the roof so much that you're becoming flat roof under our regulations.
Okay.
But yeah, the parapet is important because simple geometry. You have a rich roof as it, you have that descending or ascending height at the perimeter walls. If you don't address the parapet walls, then then you could have the more.
I mean, these are other mitigation things. I know one meeting you talked about the wedding cake tiering.
Right.
I don't know if we've done a massing impact on this or.
Well, that, how that's enforced is normally that the second floor is then subject to a larger setback than a first floor. So if it's 15, maybe 17 and a half on the second floor, it's usually, that gets them a little kind of cockeyed at times. And I'm not sure wedding cakes are what we're trying to kind of look like pop ups. You know, what we call.
No, I'm not already one way or the other. I know other communities have used that. I know we have 75% for the second floor, but they put all of that 25% mitigation at the back of the house and you still have the solid front. So you either either tell them they have to rack back, set back lines or it's a problem area.
Step gently as we go. Oh, absolutely. I think the mass, I think the goal of this commission, and I'm sure the town commission is to limit it, limit. The neighbors and the neighborhood. So I think we're making giant steps here. But I don't think we want to, I mean, that motion can carry, I think, we'll have a vote on it. But I think I'd still like Cory and. I'd still like Corey and, and Durani. Maybe Tracy and Pam too. I don't think we, do you wanna pass it on to? Town commission?
I don't think it would be ready.
No, I know, I mean.
No, no.
That's why I say, that's why workshops are so important.
Yeah.
On issues that have. Such impact on the development aspect of the town.
Yeah, I think the exploratory committee will have to meet again and go over everything that was, that happened at this meeting, and we also will need to address parapets.
Ken, can we, my, my motion's on the floor. Okay.
You second. There's no second.
No, we have to call it in.
Quick question.
We. We got a second.
Before you second, do you wanna amend the motion to also include parapet in the ordinance as well? To address parapet walls?
Yeah, coming up with a. A. Limitation of the vertical. Height. Of parapet above.
You want that as one motion or two separate ones, Mr. Perea?
I think we need to. Keep it one motion.
Okay, then I'll hold my motion and so we discuss it.
I think, um. Corey, so. Sorry. Um. From your experience, what have you seen on limitations of parapet walls, height?
Um, I, I think I've seen the same thing that, that you suggested earlier between two and three feet, two to four feet at the most. I, I don't think I've ever seen a parapet much higher than that.
Yeah, I would say the reason the three feet comes in is because if people use rooftop. Equipment. You wanna be able to screen it rather than. See it, and some houses put, you know, rooftop.
Corey, uh, can you, I don't have a, a reference here. Can you, can you quote the change we made to the rooftop equipment ordinance in the past? We, we did, we did, did an ordinance, didn't we, on rooftop equipment on flat roofs?
We did, that was a while ago.
Yeah.
I don't know if Corey can even hear who did that.
Does anybody have a reference to it?
I read something recently, that it shall be effectively screened and in no case shall it be, the parapet shall be lower than height.
So.
And it was localized, that was set up more for localized, not necessarily. The parapet, but just.
But will three feet accommodate that, that other ordinance?
Yes.
Okay. That's my question.
So I think a maximum of three feet. I agree.
That's across the, is this across the board? Irrespective of. FEMA regulations?
Yeah, this is.
Yeah, okay, hold on.
So we're effectively saying now then that. Flat roof houses would be thirty one feet higher. With a pair.
Cause that, that would be the point highest point.
Or twenty, or, excuse me, twenty seven feet, excuse me.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's why I'm sorry. Math in public.
It, but I, I've seen examples, uh, of ones where they have a parapet plus a sloped roof which extends above the parapet, which looks rather odd. It is. That's what we. Are we gonna create the? Twenty seven foot parapet and, uh. It's still a, a, a roof line potentially thirty six behind that parapet?
Yeah, it's flat roof, it's flat roof.
Okay, thank you.
How go on torture? Okay, so the motion stands as. You wanna try and repeat that one more time for staff?
As I first did before. The NAVD seven foot is the new datum. And any increase. Of the flood height from FEMA. For each foot of increased flood height, one foot decrease in thirty six foot max building height. And another section. Flat roof, parapet. Max of three feet.
Above the tie beam.
Above the tie beam.
And, and do we need to establish the tie beam? More than it is now?
No.
Corey's saying yes, he'd like that?
No.
It's already.
It's already.
It's already good.
Alright. Second.
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 All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
A request, can we see this back next month so we can keep it moving?
You can.
Thank you.
And we'll bring back demolition as well.
Okay. Alright, thank you, Neil. That was. It's a pilot to lead us through this. Your next take. Alright. Any further? Your next take. Alright. Any further? Call for motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
My second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's, I, I have reasons, but no.
No, no.
Did the same thing last summer. Getting, I'm gonna go my voice on.